Thank you. Good morning, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. I ask our board members to identify themselves for the record as I call your names. Todd Ferrante.
President.
John Andes.
President.
Bill Buchanan.
President.
Bill Gordy.
President.
Nate Passwatters.
President.
Donald Smack.
President.
And I'm Elena McComas. We have a quorum. Okay, as we move along here, can I get a motion to approve today's board meeting agenda?
Motion, Donald Smack.
Thank you, a second?
Second, Bill Gordy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. We're now going to look at entering closed session. Motion to enter closed session under the general provisions, Article, Section 3305b of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the following reasons to approve closed session minutes from the previous month. Section 3305b, one is to discuss appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. So, can I have a motion to enter into closed session and a second?
Motion, Donald Smack. Second, Donald Smack.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session.
Welcome everyone as we reconvene this Board of Education open session meeting. So, a closed session meeting was held today pursuant to the general provisions, Articles 3305B of the Annotated Code of Maryland to discuss personnel matters and to approve previous closed session minutes. So, with that said, I would like to introduce Reverend Andrew Cropper from All Hallows Episcopal Church in Snow Hill, who will lead the invocation. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance afterwards.
Let us pray. God of all wisdom, we praise you for gifting us with curiosity and learning. Give to all students, teachers, and school administrators of Worcester County Public Schools a clear sense of your love and wisdom. May they feel your presence throughout this school year and guide their choices, their quest for knowledge, and grant that those who teach and those who learn may find you to be the source of all truth. Use your successes and failures as opportunities to grow in understanding of who you would have them to be and continue to shape them that they may walk in the way of Christ and grow strong in spirit's love for all people and know the complete joy of life in you. In the name of Christ, our great teacher, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend. Okay, as we move along here, can I get a motion to approve the open session board minutes from August 16th, 2022?
Donald McMooshings?
Thank you. Second?
Second, Pastor Rocker.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. We now move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. McComas. Before I get into my report today, I want to share with the board and everyone here that this morning, our team was fortunate to be a part of the United Way of the Eastern Shore kickoff of their 2022 campaign. As you know, the United Way and our Worcester County Education Foundation are our chosen workplace charities. We encourage everyone on our board, as well as in our community, to give in whatever amount you are able to support these charitable organizations who in turn support our students. Now, last month, I was excited to tell you about the ways we would be welcoming students and staff back to school, and I'd like to give our public a brief overview of the incredible success we have had as we've opened our schools. I'm sure most of you in this room have seen photos, tweets, and Facebook posts from this year's We Are Worcester opening kickoff with our entire faculty and staff. The energy at the Ocean City Convention Center was in a word that matches our theme: magical. Our student performers, our invigorating speaker, Kim Strobel, the generous donation from our Teacher of the Year automotive partner, Hertrick, and of course, our closing video, which certainly was sprinkled with a bit of what they call pixie dust, came together to truly make a magical morning, and I thank Ms. Carrie Steers for that pixie dust word. I see her smiling. And for those that love our kickoff video, we have some good news for you since so many of our schools got into the Disney spirit with their performances. We couldn't fit it all into our videos, so throughout this year, we will be releasing the full versions of each school or office's video in bite-sized social media videos to keep the magic alive all year long. So be sure you're following us on Facebook and Twitter so you don't miss those. They are certainly exciting to see. For those of you that are already following us on social media, I hope you were able to see our board members and the leadership team as we traveled the county to visit each of the 14 schools on the first day of school. Yes, this board and our leadership team went to every single school. All of our students and staff were filled with that back-to-school spirit. There were smiles, hugs, and I know at one point, I watched some students skip down the sidewalk to get back into their school. It was just an incredible day filled with so, so many magical moments for us. Now that we have started the school year off with wonder, joy, and what feels like boundless energy and enthusiasm, we know that we can't let that momentum slide. We will continue our efforts to support both our students on their educational journey and our faculty and staff this school year as we continue to strive for as much success as possible. And now, I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. McComas.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'd like to move on to student representatives' reports. Thank you and welcome to our student representatives, and thank you for stepping in today. They're going to provide our monthly updates from our high schools, and I believe this month, we start with Janez. Did I pronounce that wrong? Good. I did it again. Okay. Help me out.
Jay Nas.
Jay Nas.
Got it. We'll never do that again.
Thank you. The school year has gotten off to a great start. Our Fresh Eagles Day and Back-to-School Bash were well attended by parents and our community partners. On September 12th, we resumed our Every Monday Matters Social and Emotional Wellness lessons during our summer periods. This month's theme is Mondays Get Imaginative. Teachers begin a year-long refreshers study of restorative practices with a focus on moving beyond the circles. September 16th, freshman-focused members conduct their first check-in meetings with the ninth graders. Snow Hill High School's sports teams are having a great season so far. Congratulations to our boys' cross-country team for sweeping the top five spots at the Salisbury meet. Our football team won their first game of the season 42-6 against Arcadia. This morning, we had our kickoff for Snesbeak Junior. This is a partnership with UMES to mentor and support students of color that are interested in STEM-related fields. September 21st, the Snow Hill Planning Council will meet at Snow Hill Elementary School. September 26th, Life Touch will be here for school pitchers. On September 26th, Snow Hill High School's Academy 100 Session 1 of the after-school program will begin and run for 11 weeks. We are offering driver's education and 15 different academic and enrichment programs to meet the needs of all our students. On this same day begins our thrilling Homecoming Week thanks to our SGA. The Homecoming Games September 30th and the Homecoming Dance will be October 1st. September 20th, all 10th graders will take the PSAT. AGH will also be giving flu shots to teachers and staff on this day. October 8th, the cross-country team will have their annual lapidon beginning at 8:00 a.m. Snow Hill High School will continue swearing higher. Thank you. And now to Piper Gurney from Pokemoke High School.
Thank you. I will be reading both the reports from Pokemoke and from Worcester Tech. I'll start with Pokemoke, though. "We have much to celebrate this month. We had an excellent kickoff to this school year, complete with every student and staff participating in One School, One Book. In order to show our commitment to literacy, book clubs are being held twice a week during Year 60, while our entire school community reads Night. This memoir was penned by Nobel Peace Prize-winning Eli Wiesel based on his experience during the Holocaust. It's an important story about resilience and perseverance in the face of tragedy. Our school will be visiting the Holocaust Museum as a culminating activity. Our freshman seminar classes are off to a great start with freshmen receiving financial literacy instruction, as well as examining career paths via naviance and field trips. We are also proud to announce that Pokemoke High School was just named a Naval Honor School due to our excellent MCJROTC program. Congratulations to our wonderful instructors and cadets for receiving this honor two years in a row. This Saturday at 12:45 p.m., please support our MCJROTC by bowling at Eastern Shore Lanes for their fundraiser. Our After-School Academy will begin on Monday, September 26th. We are offering Dream Chasers, Career Guidance, Math and Reading Support, Green Team Esports, Drug-Free Youth Council, Graphic Design, and Driver's Education. We are excited to give Grade 9 PSATs on September 28th to current freshmen taking English 9. This gives students, families, and schools excellent information to help prepare for college acceptance and as well as an opportunity for test-taking practice. Finally, please join us for Homecoming Games and the crowning of the Homecoming Queen and King, as well as a celebration of homecoming royalty on Friday, September 30th. Our Homecoming Dance is from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 1st. Last but not least, on Tuesday, October 4th, we will hold our PUC field rededication ceremony at 5:30. At this time, we will also honor Warrior Women and their contributions to Title IX. Please come see our beautiful field and help commemorate these Pokemoke Warriors. Thank you once again to the Board of Education and County Commissioners for their support of updating our playing surface. Pokemoke High School, Pokemoke Mills School, and Pokemoke Elementary School's students and staff are grateful for the continued support of our Board of Education and executive team." And now, onto the Worcester Report from Worcester Tech. "We are excited to welcome back approximately 600 students for our first semester at Worcester Tech. We were overjoyed with the attendance we had at our first open house of the school year. This was an opportunity for parents and students to meet their teachers and see our building. Many parents have had students in their building for three years, and due to COVID, this was their first time seeing our classrooms. Our first parent-teacher conference night will be held on Thursday, September 29th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Our Skills USA and FFA clubs are busy prepping for our annual Worcester Tech Golf Tournament on October 15th. All proceeds will go to both clubs. Working in conjunction with Warwick Community College, we once again are able to offer several dual enrollment opportunities for our students. This is a great way for students to get a jumpstart on their college careers. It is great to see our building alive again. So much activity going on. It's going to be a great year." Now, to our of you?
Thank you, Piper. I'll be reading the report from Stevens Duketer High School. "Days may be getting shorter, but the list of activities and events is getting longer at Stevens Duketer High School. Our most exciting news came at the beginning of the month when we learned that Stevens Duketer distinction as best school by Coastal Style Magazine for the second year in a row. We would like to thank our students, faculty, community, and school system leadership, their continued dedication and support in our school as best they can be. In order for our students, first, we would like to congratulate our national merit semifinalist, Jessica Beck and Rena Derrickson. We'd also like to congratulate all the students who earned either national African-American recognition, Hispanic recognition, and/or rural and small-town recognition, along with the nearly 40 students who earned advanced placement honors from College Board. During the month of September, our 15 sports teams have been cruising through their seasons in spectacular fashion. Our clubs and extracurricular programs are also off and running with the NJR T C program, participating in the Leadership Academy and orientarian competition in the band and band front ready for halftime shows. Our key club and fellowship of Christian athletes began their list of activities. Our National English Honor Society will host its induction ceremony on September 21st, and our National Honor Society members have been busy serving as hosts and greeters for various, including our annual Worcester County Public Schools kickoff event, CHS Freshman Seahawk Day, Buckingham Elementary School's Bucky Bear Barbecue, and our schools' Back-to-School Night. Looking ahead to the coming weeks, we are excited to begin the fall season of the After-School Academy, which will feature both tutorial and enrichment programs, as well as additional programs like Kids Wish for Kids, a service organization partnering with Believe in Tomorrow. Our Homecoming Week begins October 3rd, and preparations are already being made for this exciting week. Other events that are on the horizon for us include the ROKA Honor Society induction ceremony and the Presidential Service Award Ceremony on October 13th. Meanwhile, our instructional days have been meaningful and exciting, and both our students and teachers fully embraced the return to normalcy. Again, from all of us at Stevens Duketer High School, thank you for making our school system so great, and best wishes to everyone for a safe, productive school year. Thank you."
Thank you. Thanks to all of you. Appreciative of your time and your talent and just being part of this. It's so important for us. Okay, I really need to let you know that. Thank you. Okay, moving on to school and community participation. Time to recognize any audience members from the following organizations: WCTA. WCS... I do it every time. WCESP.A. I'll get it. Anyone? Worcester County Retired School Personnel. Thank you. We did. Thank you so much. Representatives from various schools? Okay, we now move on to student staff community recognition. Ms. Taylor?
We have with us today some national champions. I'm going to not say a whole lot, but let their principal introduce the team and their leader. So, Mr. Zimmer from Worcester Tech High School will come up and do the introduction.
Good morning, or good afternoon. I have the great privilege, as it seems every year, to introduce Mr. Rick Stevens and his band of merry men and merry women in their red. I promise before I retire, I will come in one day in one of those blazers. So, without further ado, I'll hand it over to Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Appreciate it. Good afternoon. So, this year was a challenging year with Skills USA overall. About 60... we were down about 60% the whole state with Skills USA members last year in competitions because of COVID, but we're ramping it back up. We're hoping to be back to normal this year and take as many kids as we can. These young people came and competed at the states and placed first in the state of Maryland, and then went to Atlanta, Georgia. This should have been our third year in Atlanta, but it was our first, and they went from June 20th to 25th to compete against their peers from across the country. We had some other students placed in the top 15, and we tried to explain to them, you're not 15th in Worcester, you're not 15th in Maryland, you're 15th in the country, which is awesome. But we're going to recognize the top 10. We'll start out with a young man who competed in the Principles of Engineering Technology, came in second in the nation, Matthew Beck. Then we have a group of young ladies that competed in a contest called American Spirit. We've done this quite a few years. This is our very first year to break the top 10. They placed sixth in the nation. Kayla Layfield, Mia Shinwin, and Brianna Angelo. She was... yes, she's working. She couldn't come. She graduated. Our last award that we're going to receive, Mr. Taylor has, this is our sixth year that Worcester Tech has placed in the top three places. They were actually bronze this year. This is the sixth year that we've placed in a national chapter excellence program. We're very proud of that, that all the last six years, we've been in the top three, and again, this year, we won for chapter excellence.
If you've been coming to our board meetings for any length of time, each and every year, Rick Stevens brings a quality student and quality students to this board meeting to be recognized. All the snow that scars from great leadership. And under the Rick Stevens leadership, under this Skills USA program, Worcester has served a positive role. I want to congratulate. Thank you. I want to congratulate you.
Thank you. Without you, Krista Runge's been here in the back, and of course, Mr. Zimmer in our administration, but without you all, this couldn't happen. We appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I can say a whole lot about this next person and this award, but I'm excited today because we are going to recognize excellence in physical education. And so this superintendent is very excited. So without further ado, I'm going to not steal her thunder. One of our leaders in that area is Tamara Mills. I'm going to ask Tamara Mills to introduce our guest.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Zimmer to join me. So just to clarify, the award is for-
Mr. Zimmer, it was Tamara Mills.
I can't take over the whole meeting.
These individuals are being recognized for not only their physical education, but also their health instruction. So SHAPE Maryland, which is the Society for Health and Physical Education in Maryland, it is our professional organization that helps develop phys ed teachers, health teachers, and also gives awards to those who are outstanding in the program. We have two awards this year. Every couple of years, we get some of our amazing individuals recognized, and this year we have two. It's the Simon McNeely Award, and it is given to teachers who show outstanding instruction in physical education and health. The first one I'm going to ask to come up, Ms. Esworthy. This is Erica Esworthy. She is a health teacher at Snow Hill High School. I would, it's difficult for me to say because I love all of our health teachers, but probably the strongest I've ever seen in my career. She loves the kids. She's passionate about making sure that they are healthy, that they know how to make good decisions in their lives. She connects with them. And one of the greatest things, too, is she's a very skills-based and task-oriented teacher. So students are doing tasks, they're performing actions, they're not just sitting there getting instruction, get given to them. And that's what makes her class exciting. Every kid I've ever spoken to loves having Ms. Esworthy's class. So congratulations. Dr. Purvis, if you would like to come join us for a quick photo? Congratulations. And I believe she's working on a current doctorate, right? Yeah. Not an easy task. We'll let Mr. Zimmer get it.
Do you want Ms. Mills in it?
Yes, Tamara, pop in here.
Our second Simon McNeely Award winner, equally, I have a lot to say about, Mr. Colby Haynes. If he will please come up front. I first met Colby as a tech coach, and then he was actually though certified in physical education, and just continued to grow as a professional. I've never heard a person in a school or a student ever say a negative word about Colby. They love him. We love him. He's always done anything that any administrator or colleague has asked him to help with. I don't know if you'd believe it, but this dapper young man last week was crawling around on the floor with pre-K three-year-olds because he now is actually the teacher of a pilot course that we just started two years ago. It's brand new for Worcester County. It's called Music and Movement, and it incorporates music standards and physical education and health standards, and it pairs the two, which research will show is a wonderful way for students to grow and develop. So pre-K 3 and pre-K 4, and I think, did you have kindergarten? And I've participated in a couple of classes, and I'm not coming out of there. You know, it's a workout. It's a workout. So we appreciate you so much for all you do. Thank you so much, Colby Haynes. And just very quickly, sorry, while we're on the phys ed, I just wanted to give Jay Nas a prop. He mentioned earlier that Snow Hill sports are off to a good start. He actually placed third overall in the cross-country meet the other day. So we're watching. Thank you all very much.
Hey, the last recognition today, this is one of the society thanks in our school system that we like to recognize. Today, I'm going to recognize our food service program and the gentleman who leads that process. Most people didn't think about food service during the pandemic. We were worried about making sure we were got kids online, we were making sure that we were meeting the needs of our kids educationally. And this gentleman, simple handling with the help of many, made sure that we were feeding all of our kids at feeding sites throughout this county, providing food for our kids and some of our families in Worcester County. But today, it's a little bit more special for me to recognize for all of the children for the food service program that we have here in October, the 10th of the 4th P, it's National School Lunch Week. I'd like to lead that proclamation, the crowd, and the fans up. Whereas the National School Lunch Program plays a important role in helping to ensure that every child in the nation is ready to learn because of hunger, because a hungry or unnourished child is less likely to be an eager and attentive student. And whereas the National School Lunch Program has a demonstrated commitment to our children's health and well-being, serving nutritious meals that are balanced in vitamins and calories which supports healthy eating habits. And whereas in Worcester County, all 14 public schools participate in the National School Lunch Program, directly supporting student success. And whereas the success of this effort is due largely to resourceful and creative local food service administrators, managers, and staff working in cooperation with parents, teachers, community groups, government personnel, and students. Therefore, we have resolved that October the 10th, 2014, 2022 be proclaimed as National School Lunch Week, a time to celebrate the importance of a program that helps students nourish, survey, and learn. We have further resolved that this proclamation should be made a part of the Minutes of the Board of Education adopted this 20th day of September, 2022, and is signed by Mrs. Elaine McComber, our board president, and myself, Superintendent Schools, Mr. Collins.
We're now going to move to the Individuals' Delegation's Comments section. All individuals who have signed up to address the Worcester County Board of Education may do so for one to two minutes regarding information, commendations, or concerns which may need future board attention. Concerns that are specific to an individual will not be discussed and should be directed to appropriate district personnel for investigation. When you're called to address the board, please state your name and address for the record. Thanks. Okay, first, Jackie Cutlip.
I don't think I need it, but it's on. Got it. So my name is Jackie Cutlip. I live in Berlin, Maryland. I have three kids in three of the Worcester County schools here. I'll try and keep this quick since I got buzzed last time. I'm here to speak on three topics. The first one that I'm asking is if you made any decisions or plan on making any decisions about lowering the opt-out that's already in place regarding the health curriculum. I know that it's already there, but for some of us, this is a personal choice or a religious choice that a lot of us do not believe should be taught in the schools at all. But if this is truly about equality for all, then you must provide an equal opportunity to opt out for those of us who do not wish that these topics be taught to our minor children in school. If it's about equality, it has to be equal on both sides. It just has to be. That's what we need to do. The second one is school bus shortages. I saw that that was on the agenda today, maybe some headway was made in that, and I don't know that you guys are even aware. I know you know that some of the buses are overcrowded. They have shared schools, obviously, but my middle schooler gets out at 2:40. 2:40, she's pulling out on the buses. They are prompt every day. She gets off of the bus, and I live 3.8 miles away, an hour and 10 minutes later. An hour and 10 minutes later, and she's 3.8 miles away. We have to do better. There has to be a better solution. That's just not acceptable for her. The third thing that I'm here to talk about, and extremely important, is school safety. I did this years ago after Sandy Hook, and I really think that our guard is being let down around here, and it's time that we need to reevaluate. It's 2022. We see what happens on the news every day. There is no reason for us to wait and react after the fact. This is in your hands now. Now is the time for you guys to act. At the very least, the high school needs another SRO, that they're outnumbered. You have kids that are scared to go to the bathroom there. I love Worcester County. My kids are all three. If I really didn't, I would pull them, but we can do better. Doing better would be, in my eyes, metal detectors. And I know that this has been brought up. I was a PTA president at two different schools for over five years. We averaged $20,000 to $25,000 a year. We raised like $126,000 in the time that I did it, and that money, some of it was offered back then for school safety, and I know that right now, even though I'm not in PTA, it would, people would be willing to offer that. There are means. It's not finances. Our children are priceless. There's metal detectors at the casino, protecting what? These are our kids. They need to be protected better. And I know a lot of local law enforcement that stands behind this decision, so if the answer is no, my question is why? Why no? And if the answer is not now, then the next question is when? So I'm asking you, you have children that are scared to go to school. My kids, my friends' kids are scared, and you might not see that, but they're scared to go to school in Worcester County. So I'm asking you to do better for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Addis.
I hope everyone had a well-deserved summer. My name's Katie Addis. I live in Bishopville, Maryland. I'm curious as to how closely Worcester County Public Schools follows the curriculum outlined on the Maryland State Department of Education page. Are these curriculums a general outline as to what Worcester County follows, or do our schools follow the curriculum outlines to a T? In the name of transparency, parents have the right to see what their children are learning during the school day. The Worcester County website has vague curriculum outlines that really don't give an accurate account of the actual material being presented to students. Worcester County Public Schools prides themselves on their connection to the digital world and being at the forefront of a digital usage among students and staff. Please continue to honor your pride of transparency and digital greatness by providing digital links to the curriculums being used. Also, I am formally asking the board to take a vote on the book in question, All Boys Aren't Blue, by the next board meeting in October. Superintendent Lou Taylor was the last to make a decision, which he had decided to keep with the committee's report in consideration. As quoted during the February meeting minutes from Ms. Jennifer Sills, as well as in the OC Today newspaper, "If the parents are still not satisfied after the district committee's recommendation, the issue is forwarded to the Worcester County Board of Education." I am still not satisfied. When considering your vote, please remember, a book removed from a curriculum is not a banned book. A book removed from a school library is not a banned book. A book that is illegal to own, possess, or distribute is a banned book. Most of these books in question are meant for young adults, but there are no young adults in our schools, only minors. This is a family decision, and if a family deems these books to be inappropriate or to be appropriate for their child, then they are able to access them at a public library or a bookstore. Protecting our children from sexually explicit books is not bad parenting. It is, in fact, the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. This is the last one.
Good afternoon. Welcome back to the school year. Congratulations to a nice kickoff to the year and a safe start. Thank you for always prioritizing the safety and well-being of our students, our staff, our educators. I want to share that through the Worcester County Garden Club, I have the opportunity to be at Snow Hill Elementary to, well, let me just back up a little bit and just comment on a couple of things today. Because I forgot to tell you, I am on St. Luke's Road. I have kids in Snow Hill. My son is there. My daughter moved on from there. And I do have to say that Erica Esworthy has made a lifetime impact on my kids. My daughter is now out of state, and some of her first priorities were to make sure she had healthy food options and ways to prepare meals for herself and to get a gym membership. I love it. My son also signed up for after-school academies, even though he's got a busy schedule, and he wants to do the weightlifting at 6:30 in the morning before school. So Erica Esworthy's making huge lifetime impact on kids, and I am honored with that. I also want to recall that the book, All Boys Aren't Blue, to my recollection, is not part of the curriculum. It is in our school library, and as a parent of kids who are, of any child, I think they need access to information that might resonate with them, through their choice. The reason I'm here, I am a volunteer at the Snow Hill Elementary School through the Worcester County Garden Club, and I get to help try and maintain the garden there. And I'll tell you, after COVID, boy, the weeds took over that garden, and it's been a lot of work, and I was there a lot during the summer to try and get the garden ready for back-to-school stuff during the ridiculously hot August. I have the privilege as a volunteer to show up briefly. Oh, my goodness. The staff there, the custodial staff, they work their tails off. And Mr. Townsend, Ms. Collins, they are always doing stuff. They're short-staffed with custodial staff. They have been for years. They've always requested more staff, and they clean the inside of the school, outside of the school. They maintain everything. And with all of our school getting rearranged, every single room in the school got rearranged because of bringing in pre-K 3 and having to prioritize the safety of the school, moving the youngest kids in the school, the oldest kids in the trailers. So during the brief little break from when after-school, excuse me, summer academies ended and the start of the school year, I think it was like three and a half weeks, they had to empty every single room in the school, rearrange it, clean it, and they got staff who left for other jobs. So it was essentially two people with a couple students' help. And they busted their tails. I know other maintenance staff from the Board of Ed came over to assist as they could, but I get to work for just two hours or so and go away hot and sweaty. They work all day long continually. They don't get a break. They get comp time, but they never have time to take it because they work in a school where kids spill things, there's accidents that happen every day. They're always cleaning up, and they're not going to leave each other short-staffed. So please consider in the future finding some additional custodial staff for Snow Hill. Thank you, and sorry to have overtimed.
Thank you. Thank you. Edward Lee.
Madam Chairman, Dr. Taylor, and staff. Hi, y'all. Pleased to be back with you. I kind of want to give you an update. First, I want to thank Dr. Taylor and his staff. Following my last meeting here, I had one of the most. It was just, it was out of sight. It was just great to be among professionals who show their compassion and concern about the issues on the- the issues on the table across the board for our children. And I am just so thankful to you, Dr. Taylor, for allowing that to happen, because without you, it wouldn't have happened. I'm going to share with you what I've, a kind of an update that's taken place. And one of the, one of the school superintendents and staff that I have met with said categorically, what is Worcester County doing? Because we're going to follow their... Now, I'm not going to tell you who that was. I'm going to assume that those persons have been in contact. They said, they said. But it was just amazing. I was just so, I guess profoundly impacted to see our system working, coming to grips with challenges. Not saying that anything got solved that day, but it was the, it was just the energy and the concern. Let me share with you, if I may briefly, where we are going this year with this session with financial literacy, because it impacts you and it's impacting the entire Lower Shore. Since I last met with you, I met, I have met with each of the superintendents and their staff. They are in the process of responding to Dr. Taylor, the same information and letter that I, that we discussed. I don't recall the actual date, Ms. Shortz. I would ask you to help me get the quality. It's sometime in October, and I don't recall that date, but if somebody lets me know before I leave, I appreciate it because I don't want to miss that date. So following the meetings that we have had with the superintendents, I had a meeting with Dr. Hoy and Dr. Newton and Dr. Johnson. The, we are in the process now with his leadership, developing a curriculum or a program curriculum that will be taught at the, with intent to be taught at Warwick Tech for five consecutive sessions that will cover financial literacy. I think that that is huge. I think it's huge for the fact that the students matriculating that aren't going into academia as such, but going to technical schools, will have a bridge between leaving high school and going over to Warwick as it relates to the financial literacy. I, I met with, I don't know if you're familiar with it, a doctor, a, a, young men of distinction have asked us to prepare a financial literacy curriculum for their group. Now, they function in three counties. And again, it's linkage, as I see it, between the school systems, what's happening in our community, and going into the technical schools.
Could we, could we wrap it up, sir? For our two minutes?
Yes.
It's over.
Okay.
Thanks.
I really come, came to say thank you. That was a long way of getting there. I apologize. I, excuse me. I apologize. I'm going to cut it there.
No, 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 no.
October 25th.
I'm going to cut it there and say, I look forward to our...
October 25th.
October 25th, and we'll wrap it all up with that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We're moving on. Thank you. We're moving on to curriculum and instruction report. Dr. Annette Wallace.
Thank you, Ms. McHomas. Our first presenters this morning are Worcester Technical High School, and I'll introduce Mr. Zimmer, who will introduce our presenters and our young presenters.
Five years ago, when Mr. Taylor told me he was reassigning me to Worcester Tech, I thought he had lost his mind. I, I wasn't sure if I had done good, if I had done bad, if I had done nothing. I'm not sure. Having been at Decatur for 12 assorted years and sending 10 buses of students every day to Worcester Tech, I didn't know what they were doing because Decatur had their own issues that we were taking care of. I say it every year that we present a new group up here, but Worcester Tech is a hidden gem of Worcester County that no one still knows about. We do all we can on social media to get it out there, and we're trying to put the word out. I invite all of you, board members, anytime you have a free two hours, come on in. We'll take you in welding. We'll take you in nursing. We'll take you anywhere you want to go, except Phil Cropper's kitchen. We won't take you in there because we get enough of Phil's food anyway. This year, I have the good fortune of presenting our agricultural science class and our Future Farmers of America Club. I'm not going to say too much more about it. I'll let them speak on their behalf. But at this time, Mrs. Flores, if you will bring your young ladies up here, you can take it away.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the invitation to address you this afternoon. I have some of my student leaders that have joined me. This is Ms. Alexa Rice. She is actually one of our officers this year. And then I have Ms. Elena Ortell. And I'll just let them give a quick introduction for themselves, and then we actually brought a little gift for each of you to be able to take home from us today.
Good afternoon. My name's Elena Ortell, and I go to Stephen Decatur, and I'm in 11th grade, and I've been in the agriculture program and a part of FFA for three years.
Good afternoon. I'm Alexa Rice. I go to Stephen Decatur. I'm in 11th grade, and I have been a part of FFA for three years.
In agriculture.
So as I set up for a quick little presentation for you guys, they are going to be bringing around a jar of honey for each of you to take home. It's of our clover flavor. One of the fundraisers that we do throughout the school year is selling honey. It sounds very simple, but from an advisor for these students, they are learning so much more than just placing a jar of honey on the table for individuals. They learn marketing. They learn those soft skills on how to talk to people. They learn how to interact so that regardless if they decide to have a career in agriculture, they can at least learn those job skills to be successful wherever they're employed.
Thank you.
Yep. Airplane. Do I just airplane from here? Mm-hmm. It's Apple T8. It's a G-01.
There we go.
Okay. So here we go. I gathered together a few highlights. I realize time is precious. You guys have a very long day, so I did not want to take too much of your time, but I just wanted to really highlight on the important aspects, since I have come to be the Worcester County Agriculture Science teacher, as well as the FFA advisor. One reason that I came to Worcester Public Schools is because in my previous job, I saw a need that when students were coming into college, that they were lacking certain skills. And I thought I could have a better impact at the high school level than I could once people were established in their careers. So previously, I was employed with the University of Maryland as an agriculture extension agent, and my task was to work with producers in the county, actually the Lower Shore, Lower Eastern Shore. And my job was to make their farms profitable, successful, and moving into the future, gaining and using new technologies. And one of the things that I saw when I was in the field is that as these businesses were trying to hire employees, they couldn't find them because they didn't have the knowledge of just agriculture science in general. And I thought that, you know, what better way to help the community and our county than starting right where most of our students are going to come from, right from the public school system? So I am an industry personnel, an industry professional. My students see that in the classroom. I don't just teach it. I do it. We own and operate a horse farm in Berlin where we compete and train quarter horses. We do it at a regional and national level as well. And my students see that, and I share some of the challenges that I encounter on a day-to-day moving forward with some of the weather concerns, with some of the hiring concerns, because when I am at the farm, I'm not only taking care of the animals, but I'm also having to work with people as a boss. And how do I interact with people? And what are some of the challenges that I see with that? And I share that. So as an educator, both in and outside of the classroom, my job is to promote learning through personal growth, through developing those skills, through hands-on learning. My students can certainly share that they're never quite sure what's going to be in the classroom, on the classroom, around the classroom, and what they're going to have to be involved with. So my job is not to have them sitting still very long, even though it is a classroom. I want them to get up and learn by doing. And that is actually the motto of our FFA professional organization for these students. When I came into being the agriculture science teacher, I actually do not come from being an FFA member. I am not an alumni. I never participated in POUR 8 because it was never offered. So don't, don't hold it against me, but I'm a Wycombe Co graduate from Bennett High, and this was never offered to me. As a veterinary science student who really had a passion for it, I struggled to find anything outside of the regular academic classes besides AP Bio, AP Chemistry. I took advantage of those classes. You know, I was fortunate. I excelled at academics. However, there was nothing specific for my industry as a high school student, and that is something that this organization offers to these students. I have pre-veterinarian students who they are out doing internships with vet clinics right now. They're doing competitions. And I emphasize just the animal science, because that's just what we were talking about earlier today in class. But with FFA, you have to be enrolled in an agricultural science program or class. It is not open to every student in the county. You have to come through the agriculture science program because we want you to know, we want the students to understand what is true science, what is factual. How do you gain those facts? How do you gain that research so that you can make good decisions, not only for yourself, but your community as well? So we are involved in many different things. Our chapter is growing every year. I have shared with Mr. Zimmer that I really have to stay organized, because when I first came in six years ago, I had three returning students to the program. That's what I said. Whoever said, ooh. That was, I said, oh, my goodness, how can I reinvigorate these students to want to come to Tech and want to come and take this program? I'm excited to share that this year, including second semester students, we will be up to 55 students.
Wow.
For our student organization. So in just six years, we have students asking and wanting and seeking to come to Worcester Tech. So we are no longer just cows, plows, and sows. We are so much more. We're part of the community. We are part of bringing their level of knowledge to a higher level so that if they choose to go to college, they are prepared. We are fortunate that we have five or six articulated agreements with universities in Maryland and surrounding states, that they can earn a minimum of three college credits. I believe it's Delaware Valley University, that they can earn upwards to, I think it's 18 credits if they complete the courses and, and receive a B average or more. So lots of opportunity with this class and this organization. So it is definitely a co-curricular program. I do have, hopefully this will play, a short little, so during COVID, I had to get creative, keep these kids engaged. So God bless TikTok. So we used it for a positive, and this is actually one of my student projects of what they came up with on, to them, what FFA meant to them. So I don't know if the audio is going to go. I'm sure this can be shared with you guys, but there's some audio. It's cool. It's fun. It's uplifting. But in one word, I challenged them. I said, I want you to tell me, what does FFA mean to you? If you had to say one thing, what was the impact that you gained from it? These are freshmen to seniors. They had to use technology. They had to communicate, and they had to reach people that were not in their classroom. They had to reach other members that were not in their specific class. And this is one of the projects that they were able to come up with. So hopefully, you'll have a few minutes in your downtime during the day. You can take advantage and kind of take, listen to that audio. It is, it is rather uplifting. So let me move on. I'm taking a lot of time. We utilize technologies. I'm a pretty forward-thinking individual. I like to bring that into the classroom. So we're utilizing these wonderful technologies you guys have placed in the classrooms. The best part is I can tie them into ag technologies that were out there already. I can tie them into our poultry industry, where you can take your iPad and get your static pressure readings in the chicken house and send it up to the farm office. You can take your GPA, GPS system in the tractor, and you can do your GIS overlays onto your moisture content, your yield content, and your soil types on your farms. We talk about that in class, and I explain how to use it. So we're constantly using computers. That's part of our day. One of the feedbacks that we get is from our PAC committee. All of the programs at Worcester Tech have a PAC committee. It's a program advisory committee members where we utilize local businesses to give us feedback. What do they need? Our job is to prepare our students for them. Those are our leaders in our community. They need people. They need educated, skilled individuals, and that's where our students come in. This is just a quick stamp of some of the businesses that are involved with my PAC community, and they offer internships as well as job opportunities to our students throughout the year. We meet twice a year. This is for all of the program advisory committees at Worcester Tech, a minimum of twice a year. Many of us talk to them weekly. They provide feedback. They provide support to that programs, as well as offering those internships. We are part of the community. There's many opportunities during the year. This past weekend, I had students at the Worcester County Fair in many different capacities, and you can see the list of various community engagements that they're doing throughout the year. This has been challenging the last two years, as it has been for everyone. However, we were able to still be active through COVID. We just had to go about it a little bit differently. I will say, last year, when they came back into the classroom, especially in the spring, my kids were so excited to get into our school greenhouse that I was having, like, I was following them. I was like, whoa, come here, guys. I gotta, I gotta tell you what we're doing first. But this year, they're already asking, when are our poinsettias coming in? We're ready for them to come in. What type of spring flowers are we going to have as part of our sale catalog? So they are already asking me. I'm not even out of September yet. Like, I'm still trying to make sure my attendance is right every day. But they're that excited. They're already talking about it. So the programs at Worcester Technical High School, along with the Ag Science Program, is experiential learning so that we can promote their growth, connections to the communities, because hopefully, these are networks that they're going to go work with individuals who be hired, have jobs, many different events. We do compete throughout the year. I don't make my members compete, but oftentimes, they, they seek that out themselves. We've had several teams that have gone on to win seats, as well as different field trips. I'm one teacher for this program, single teacher. However, as an industry professional, I reach out and network with those that can support the program, as well as offer those different opportunities. And I also look for parents for guidance, too. You know, what do, what do they need? As a parent myself, actually, I'm very proud this year. My daughter, she's a freshman from Stephen Decatur High School, she is taking my program. Not only am I her mom, I'm also her teacher, so bless, bless me in the evenings. But it's, she's that excited to take a program at Tech that she shared with her friends, because, you know, we can't always share who mom and dad are sometimes in the, in the friend circle. That I, she was very proud that I was one of the teachers there, and she was telling a lot of her friends to, to come join. So we dress for success, the iconic blue and yellow jackets.
I love it.
We stand out. We want to stand out because we're excellent, and we expect that. You know, I expect that of my students. And this was actually a picture last year. I want to thank all of you. I believe we were the first field trip after COVID, and we went to Indiana. Like, we went. We were out. Peace. So taking nine students on an airplane was very stressful. For myself, they enjoyed it. They had a wonderful experience. But this was just a quick picture I took of them when we were walking down the hall to the national convention. And I just thought it was super iconic. We're standing out, Maryland, Worcester Tech. Such a fantastic visual. So success after high school, I really like to emphasize. Many of my students are attending colleges with, starting out already with college credits. We have students studying ag and business. I have two students, actually, I think they're Decatur students. One is at Baylor University. She is the captain of the equestrian team right now as a junior, and she came through our program. She came through us. And I believe her sister has already committed to Baylor. I have lots of seniors this year. I think I've wrote eight letters of recommendation already, and we're doing business, pre-vet, plant science, botany. I know I'm missing one or two of them, but they're, they're going on to do great things. I know I'm missing one or two of them, but they're, they're going on to do great things.
Nice.
And then at that note, are there any questions that you guys may have for myself or Mr. Zimmer, for either Worcester Tech High or the agricultural science program?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. It's, it's really impressive that you went from three to 55 students. I mean, I know that that's important to build a program up and it's hard to do. You know, I had to do it, you know, with, with teaching art. How many students in your program come from a farming background?
Less than a fifth.
Less than a fifth, okay, okay.
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but when I ran my numbers over the summer, less than a fifth of them do. However, all of them have an interest and all of them have a passion. And oftentimes, this is the first opportunity they can ask those questions and not feel like they're being judged. It's a pretty neutral zone. I teach both sides of a conversation. I teach them it is okay to agree to disagree and that there's lots of opinions and you have to learn how to manage those opinions in the real world.
Okay, thank you. And one last comment. Mr. Zimmer was talking about the program. And I encourage the other board members, if you have the time to stop by and visit with him. I stopped by the programs, I think it was in the springtime. And he took me around and I didn't have enough, I guess I got too involved with each little program that you showed me to, to see every program. But it was very, very impressive, very impressive.
Seeing how quick, I think we're in day ten of school. And the things that are going on already on day ten, you know, like that, they pick up and start and they roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Zimmer.
And a last quick note, I just want to mention kind of tagging on to the, the growth of the program. Mr. Zimmer has been my principal for five years. And I really credit him to supporting some of my ideas that I come up with and being really gung ho and forward. He's been super supportive, not only of my program, but the entire school. And I think a lot of my program's success really does come from my administration. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Ms. Flores, I want to comment to thank you. Mr. Buchanan said it, going from three to 55 is amazing. And I, that does strictly come from the leader. And I, I thank you for your leadership. I'm, I'm in your school and many days when I'm there, I don't make it down to your area. There's a reason. I'm not a big animal lover. And there's people, there's people on my, there's people on my executive team that want me to go down there so that they can tease me with animals.
You're safe right now, there's nothing down there.
I, I just want you to know, if I come in walking down there, I need you to protect me there. Okay. But, but you have a great program and, and it's great when we have these presentations to hear all the great things that happen in Worcester County. And I agree with Mr. Zimmer and you are a part of that. That Worcester Technical High School is a hidden gem. And you are part of that hidden gem. And thank you for what you're doing. And I hear positive comments all over these communities about what we do over at Worcester Tech and with your program as well. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Zimmer, for what you do.
Ms. Flores, I just have a quick question because I'm just curious and maybe your students could answer it. So FFA is related to 4H? No, there's no connection. Okay, I heard you mentioned 4H and I wasn't sure.
No, so 4H is a community-based youth organization that does very similar things.
Oh, okay.
However, you do not have to be enrolled in an ag science program through 4H. FFA is almost the next level in the community. In that you are learning from a true industry educator on, on some of those skills to take you to the next level. Some of my FFA members are 4Hers. So they're related, but FFA, we actually have stronger, I don't want to say standards, but we really want you to know the true science behind everything so that some of the myths that are out there, we can talk about them and kind of say, nope, that's not really how it works, that's not how it's approached, but this is what you want to do instead. We're taking the students and really, really teaching them how, those leadership skills in the classroom so that they can then go advocate for the industry, for our county, and for our school.
I just purchased a baby Highland calf so I could bring it to visit. I'm sure Mr. Taylor would accompany it, but it could be your first animal when we pick him up.
Can we just get your chair up?
Yes, there you go. I might need a sitter. Not yet, we haven't picked him up, but he's ready. You could, you could be his babysitter, that'd be great. Okay, good.
And to our students in the back, ladies, thank you for representing that program today. And I'm very impressed, I heard some comments up here about your jackets and that you were wearing them with pride. So we thank you for that and we certainly are here to support you and your endeavors in this program.
And Mrs. Flores, thank you so much for your passion as a teacher. I can't even tell you, that's why Worcester County shines. And thank you for that.
Thank you for your time, you guys have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Apologize for that, I thought that was on. Our second presentation has no jackets. No kids, but we have two wonderful educate, well, no kids present. But two wonderful educators here today from Snow Hill Middle School. We have Dr. Cooper and Mrs. Baker. And they are the principal and assistant principal respectively. And they are going to do just the highlights of our summer school program. The board knows that we are blessed in Worcester to have every one of our schools, including Worcester Tech, with summer school programs which are desperately needed for our kids. So they're going to share some highlights and a little bit about our Worcester on Wheels program. So welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, we are excited to be here. The theme that we've heard over and over today is that there's so much in school in addition to the academics. And after school and the things that we do after the day, after the bell rings is so important to the success of our students. So I'm excited that Ms. Baker is going to share some of those wonderful things. And then I'm going to give, I'm going to end with an update with our work.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm very excited to be here to share some information about our after-school programs and our summer school programs. I'm sorry I did not bring gifts, but I do have lots of exciting highlights about our after-school and summer school program. Any high-quality after-school program needs to have certain things. And it does have a huge impact on our students such as higher student academic outcomes. It has increased student attendance, also greater socio-emotional learning. We concentrate on that a lot in the after-school program and in the summer school programs, and more positive student self-concept. One thing I would like to say, I did say earlier, they talked about myths. And I have had people say to me, you know, well, after-school and summer school is just like babysitting, right? It is not. It is not like babysitting at all. It has a very specific focus. We have high-quality offerings. And I really, truly believe that our test scores, which at Snow Hill Middle School, increased significantly last year. Not, not only is that due to the hard work of our teachers, but it also has to do with after-school and summer school programs. I feel confident. The focus of our after-school program is increasing student academic performance, of course. But we also teach social skills and personal responsibility. We talk about relationships and connections, not only to peers, staff, and to community. We foster appreciation for the arts, music, and performance. We have lots of programs that deal with that as well. And the students, they, we always have waiting lists for those programs. Improving physical, mental health and teaching sportsmanship as well. Our target population, we very specifically target a group of students. We, we offer it to all students, but we make sure we invite specific groups of students, like our students with special, with academic needs and skill deficiencies. We also target students with individual learning plans or IEPs. Students who demonstrate social and emotional needs. Students who need some mentoring. We have several mentoring programs, which I'll share in a minute. And our out-risk students who really don't have any other place to go. So we offer after-school and summer to keep them involved in school learning and basically off the streets. Our academic programs for after-school always offer a variety of offerings. We have remediation and tutoring in both reading and in math. We have enrichment in both reading and in math. And we also have other things like creative writing, book clubs, poetry, and things like that. One of our biggest focus for after-school and for summer school is the SEL or social-emotional learning. We always focus on these five concepts, self-awareness, self-management, personal decision-making, and social awareness and relationship skills. We always offer like a Just for Girls Club for sixth, seventh, and eighth girls, eighth grade girls. We offer friendship clubs for the younger girls. We have a Boys for a Positive Change for grades four through eight and community service as well. We always have offerings for art. We have the Glee Club. Our Glee Club has won awards. It travels around on field trips and it does like Christmas parades. It does all kinds of events like that. We also have a very strong act, I mean, I'm sorry, artistic program with Ms. Heather Shockley. She does things that are related to the community as well. And this year, we're offering guitar and jazz band in our after-school programs. Here are some pictures of our little darlings involved in our after-school. You can see them, they have, I, I'm very fortunate, very fortunate to have staff. My staff want to work. I, sometimes I, I even have to turn people down. I have so many teachers, which in this, you know, day and age, post-COVID is, you know, not, not easy to get people who want to stay after. But I have lots of teachers that work and I even sometimes have to put people on waiting list. All right, I do want to talk about my summer school program. I'm going to show you right now, Snow Hill Middle School had the best summer school program in the history of mankind. We, we had, it was five weeks. Every Wednesday, we went on a field trip. We had so much fun, it was amazing. I mean, I, the kids were like, this is the best summer school ever. And teachers said the same thing, so. I'm going to show you some of the highlights. We did do an African-themed lessons. We did, with the kids built boats, they built models, they built towers. They played African, I mean, our teachers came up with African-related games, music. We have Rodney Lee, who is amazing, he always teaches summer school. It was, it was so much fun. You'll see in a second with all the pictures. Here are some of our summer school projects. And every Thursday in summer school, we had Kona Ice Cane every Thursday. We cooked out, we did 100 hot dogs every single Thursday. We had, you know, Mr. Rodney would have his boombox out there and we'd be dancing and all kinds of stuff. The kids loved it. So here are our five field trips. We took a bowling field trip. We went to Eastern Shore Lanes in Pocomoke. We went to the Marva Theater to the movies one day. We went to Shad Landing, we went to Maui Jacks. And we also did Acetic. Here are just some of the pictures. Here's movies at the Marva. We had bowling. They, they, bowling was so much fun. I mean, I had so much fun. This is fishing, hiking, and canoeing at Shad Landing. This is the fishing. And many students said it was the first time, these are middle schoolers, first time they'd ever been fishing in their lives. Maui Jacks Water Park, I do want to give a shout out to Todd Burbage. He gave me 100 free tickets to Maui Jacks, which would have cost us $3,000 had we had to pay for it ourselves. So Todd Burbage, you know, would, called him up, no problem. How many you need, whatever you want. So very, and I mean, this, this water park was the highlight for many of these students because this was the, the greatest thing that happened to them this summer. They would not have been able to go to a water park had they not had this experience. This is Acetic National Seashore. We went out, we waited, we caught all kinds of little creatures. And then we came in and took a look at them. So we were, we, I mean, again, best program. Here's just a few of our stats for the summer and for last year. For the fall session of 2021, the winter, the spring, and the summer, you can see the number of students that participated. And as the year went, went on, we increased it. Remember, at the very beginning of last year, we were still kind of in the COVID and some people were still wearing masks and there were, some people were still a little apprehensive about, you know, being in groups. So you can see the percentage of our population that joined in for the different sessions, the three sessions of after-school and then summer school. And again, some of our targets are our farm students, free and reduced meal students. And you can see they're 55, 53, 57, and 73 for the summer. And the percentage of special ed, 20, 15, 18, and 20. I do want to make note that our, every special ed student in Snow Hill Middle School gets a personal invitation to join. And many of them take advantage of it. Some don't, some parents feel like by 3:00, you know, their, their child is sort of tapped out and they don't participate. But they do get a personal invitation. And another thing I want to say about this past summer school was 70 students was the highest that Snow Hill Middle School ever had in summer school. And we were very, very excited that our seventh and eighth graders, it's, it's really hard. A lot of times, seventh and eighth graders don't think summer school's cool anymore. I had almost 30 seventh and eighth graders that participated, which was the highest number of seventh and eighth graders. So very pleased about that. All right, Dr. Cooper is going to share the wow.
So we were very fortunate to receive a grant for our Worcester on Wheels program. And last year with COVID, we kind of got stalled because we tried to get the RV and we wanted to have it custom-built and it wasn't something that was able to do. And so with some manipulating with the grant, we were able to actually go and purchase it. And the RV arrived for us third week in August. So it's, it is pretty phenomenal. We were able to take it on our caravan. But just some information about it, our purpose is to be able to go out into our community and take, take our school out into the community and reach those families out in the community. We do have a partnership, Snow Hill Middle School and Snow Hill High School share the RV. We do kind of argue about, okay, who gets it? Where are we going, who's going when? Because it is incredible. It is funded through September 2023. But we will have that RV and be able to continue doing those types of things. So you're probably wondering, what are we going to do? We're going to go out and we're going to tutor students. We're going to be able to have students come in the RV, we're going to be able to feed them, we're going to be able to offer internet service. We'll have game nights and book giveaways. We did take it out for the community caravan this year and just laid on the horn going through. It was pretty cool for people to come out just to see it. We had it out at Big Bash. We ended up on, WMDT came out and did a live feed with us, which was pretty awesome. And we're going to be able to do some fun things with our families out in the community. Again, here are some pictures that kind of bring it to life. We were out at the caravan with it, delivering backpacks. That's part of the grant to make sure that every student had a high quality, not just a string bag, but a high-quality backpack full of materials. And then our Snow Hill Schools, we were able to have everyone, get that picture in front of that, that RV. Right now, the RV came to us with a little bit of air conditioning problems. So it was fixed last week and it's supposed to be back in place so that we can get it out in the community. So we're really excited about the caravans and the, all of the community outreach that we're going to be able to do with our Worcester on Wheels. Any questions? I know that was pretty rapid fire.
Dr. Cooper, I think it's pretty amazing since you're dealing with middle school population that you apparently brought back the same number you took on all these.
Yes, I think we did.
Dr. Cooper and Ms. Baker, I, I too want to say congratulations. I know you highlighted Mr. Burbage, but congratulations on your community partnerships. And that just, again, is a symbol to us that our community appreciates what we're doing with our kids. I hear that all the time from, from many business owners from Pocomoke to the North End. And appreciate you getting out there and chatting with them and getting things for our kids. So thank you for that as well. That's great, that's wonderful. And thank you for making those connections.
I, I too. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize. I too want to thank Ms. Baker and Dr. Cooper for your outstanding leadership in the area of the after-school and summer school programs. And I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee in a former life was president of Worcester County NAACP. And I in a former life was superintendent of schools. And he and I working together with some other community partners, we launched the after-school program. And so I'm, we were reaping the benefits today. And our students are reaping the benefits of what we did a long, long time ago. So I just want to recognize Mr. Lee and thank him for his support and what he did as president of the Worcester County NAACP to assure that we received the funding necessary to continue and sustain the after-school programs in our schools to benefit students. our schools to benefit students. And thanks to the leadership like Dr. Cooper and Ms. Baker, it continues today. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And that concludes the cur-
I think we have another comment.
Yeah, one thing, just a comment. I was just going to say that, you know, your after-school program is very, very impressive. I remember when the program initiated, started on that, and I taught after-school and summer school and saw great results from the students that benefited from that. So thank you very much for continuing it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And this concludes the curriculum and instruction portion of the board meeting. Back to you, Ms. McComas.
Thank you, Ms. Shorts. Wonderful presentations.
Yes.
We'll move on to administrative operations personnel.
Good afternoon, board. I have your September personnel exhibit for your consideration this afternoon. Our retirements this month, we have Carol Rogers, Cafeteria Assistant, Buckingham Elementary School. Resignations for the month, Courtney Nun, Educational Assistant, Stephen Decatur High School. Michael Redden, Custodian II, Snow Hill Elementary School. Michael Ulrich, Instructional Tech Coach, Ocean City Elementary School. And Phyllis Weaver, Educational Assistant, Cedar Chapel Special School. Our new hires for your consideration, Albert Ayers, Systems Technician, Pokemoke High School. Colleen Moskov, Educational Assistant, Snow Hill High School. Corley Patterson, Educational Assistant, Bowlin Intermediate School. Samantha Shockley, Educational Assistant, Bus Aid, Cedar Chapel Special School. Samuel Thompson, Custodian II, Stephen Decatur High School. And Shelley Zupko, Educational Assistant, Snow Hill Elementary School. On behalf of the superintendent, I recommend the approval of the personnel exhibit as presented.
Can we have a motion to approve the personnel exhibit as presented?
So moved. Bill Buchanan.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Todd Ferante.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
The next item I have is an informational item. This is announcing our, the Worcester County Public Schools negotiating teams for the upcoming year. This year, the board team for negotiations with the Worcester County Teachers Association will be myself as chief negotiator, Ms. Denise Shorts, Mr. Vince Tolbert, Dr. Annette Wallace, Dr. Michael Brown, and Mr. Ryan Cowder. Our board team for negotiations with our support group, again, I will be the chief negotiator, Ms. Dee Shorts, Mr. Vince Tolbert, Dr. Annette Wallace, Mr. Aldous Collins, Mr. Sam Slakem, and Mr. Tom Zimmer. That's your negotiating teams from the board side, and that is an informational item for the board. Per contract, our negotiations can begin as early as late November. We usually get together thereafter. As the holidays come together, we usually wait to get into the full negotiations until we get back from the holidays. But we'll be touching base with our friends over at the associations and having conversations with them of when we will actually start. And I see that behind me. I can see her over here. So the next 7.3, we have a purchase of a new bus. I'd like to ask Transportation Manager, Ms. Kim Heiser, to come up.
Good afternoon, everyone. Before you, I have an exhibit today to request.
We need you to speak into the mic. Sorry.
Sorry.
Because it's on the live stream.
Can you hear me? No?
It's just about the computer. Yeah, you're okay.
Okay. You have an exhibit today before you for purchase of a new school bus. Mr. William Holden, contractor in Pokemoke. He serves all three schools in Pokemoke. He is currently driving a bus that is in its 15th year. And so at the end of this school year, the bus will go out of service, and he is requesting to purchase a new school bus for a replacement. We were doing this a little early this year. Our three bus manufacturers have let us know that the build time for a school bus now is just about a year. And so we are requesting early for him to be able to purchase so he has something for the start of the school year. So the superintendent recommends that this exhibit be approved as presented.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the new bus contract exhibit as presented?
Donna Smack?
I'll second any question.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Ms. McComas, that concludes administrative operations. Back to you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now going to move to fiscal operations. Mr. Tolbert.
Yes, Ms. McComas. Good afternoon. Our first item, we have several today, is update Decatur Middle School construction update number 10. We have Mr. Joe Price and Ms. Lindsay Hill with Wayne Turner. Mr. Price?
Good afternoon. Lindsay is here with update number 10, and we have a requisition for your consideration.
Good afternoon. We've had a very exciting summer. So in the last 30 days, we completed the band addition, the secure vestibule. We're also able to get up into that penthouse, that mechanical penthouse, so that has been drywalled and finished, so it's ready for paint in the next couple of weeks. We've also finished the majority of the hard pipe in the ceiling of the classroom addition. The fire sprinkler line is up for. We've bought the electrical conduits for the IT system. Everything has been installed above the ceiling. So in progress now, we are wrapping up the exterior brick veneer. We have started the exterior aluminum windows in the classroom addition. We're also starting the courtyard drainage. So now that the brick is working its way off the site, we'll start the site work around the building and get those arms in. In the next 30 days, some of our milestones are, once the windows are in, we're going to be starting the drywall work for the soft bits and the chase walls in the classroom addition. We've completed our measurements for the case work, so in the next 30 days, we'll see more paint on the walls and a lot more finishes going through the classroom additions. A couple photos that we have here. This is the interior of the band storage, currently being used for storage. This is the secure vestibule, and you can see one of, we spent a lot of time in the beginning of the project with the entire team to make sure that the finishes for the secure vestibule and the brick, that they blend into the existing school. So you can see from this photo and the next photo, I think that time spent was worth it in getting. So we have a couple more mockups coming out through the project. This is the interior of the classroom. This is another mockup that will be performing for the staff at Stephen Decatur, making sure that the classroom teaching wall, that the marker boards, and the little display units, everything is at the level that they want to. So now that we're getting the black filler finishes in, we'll have this ready for approval. This is the exterior classroom addition. Today, we're actually washing down some of this brick, so this is starting to pop. And the walkways between the existing building and the classroom addition, we're getting those framed, blue skin, and the brick will start off shortly. This is the, one of the main corridors. As you can see, we have the black filler going up on these walls. And then within the next month or so, we'll start the ceiling brick. Then we have another shot of the brick insulation along this south wall.
Any questions?
Do we still feel good about December 8?
Yes. Awesome.
And under budget?
You don't have to answer that, Mr. Price, if you don't.
Under budget.
Okay.
The superintendent recommends approval of acquisition number 10.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the Stephen Decatur Middle School addition construction requisition number 10 as presented?
John Andy, so moved.
Second, Todd Ferante.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
I just have one comment, Mr. Price. I'm very impressed with the fluidness of your presentation to Apple.
Your lessons are-
I should have known and expected, no less, but I did want to give you a bonus point for that. Very nice. Come a long way.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next item up is FY '24 capital improvement program. Mr. Price?
Each October, we're required to submit our capital improvement program to the State Agency Commission on School Construction. Our FY '24 CIP includes your exhibits, and it includes a request for planning approval and design funding for the Buckingham Elementary Project, and a request for design funding for the Snow Hill Middle Cedar Delveroo Project. The design funding is brand-new. The ISE recently added a formula for state funding to provide for architectural engineering needs. CIP also includes timelines and estimated costs for future projects, group replacement at Snow Hill Middle Cedar Chapel, Pokemoke Elementary, and Wester Tech, a renovation addition for replacement school at Buckingham, and a renovation addition or replacement school at Snow Hill Elementary. The CIP also provides number of locations for the classrooms and enrollment projections through 2031. And the superintendent recommends the board approval of the FY '24 CIP.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the FY 2024 capital improvement program as presented?
Donna Smack?
I'll second any question.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Before Mr. Price leaves, I just want to say it takes a tremendous amount of time and energy and effort and expertise to put together a CIP. So I want to thank and commend you for putting together, as you've always done, expert CIP, bringing it to the board and presenting it in such a format where we can all truly understand it. And congratulations on the apple.
Thank you, Dr. Andrews.
Can we get him apple certified, Dr. Wallace, do you think?
I think he's close to being certified.
I've come a long way.
You've come a long way.
Thank you, Joe. Ms. McComas, the next item is, as we communicate with the board in the past, we need to replace our winning tracks at Pokemoke High School and Stephen Decatur High School. Mr. Taylor sent a letter over to the county commissioners last week, and earlier this morning, they approved us utilizing some of our FY '22 budgets to replace to do those two projects. And today, we have Mr. Sam Slakem with request to move forward these two projects. Mr. Slakem?
Thank you, Mr. Tolbert. Good afternoon, everyone. For you today, we have two proposals for the replacement and renovation of the tracks at Stephen Decatur High School and Pokemoke High School. Both tracks have sort of reached the end of their useful lifespan, where they can be, you know, safe and usable by the school. So we have proposals from ATC Corporation using the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Stephen Decatur High School's cost is $255,776, and Pokemoke High's is $134,830. The difference in those two proposals is there's paving involved at Stephen Decatur High School, where there is no paving involved at Pokemoke High. So on behalf of the superintendent, we recommend approval of the proposal by ATC Corp. utilizing the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract in the amounts of $255,776 for Stephen Decatur High and $134,830 for Pokemoke High.
Mr. Slakem, just a quick question. To redo that track, does the old track have to be removed, and then, or is this going to be redressed?
So at Pokemoke High, the track is going to be redressed.
Okay.
Any areas that have failed, become unlaminated, that sort of thing, are all going to be, you know, re-adhere. And then the entire track at Pokemoke High, we'll get a new surface put on there. We'll get new lines, you know, on all of those spaces. Stephen Decatur High, the entire existing track is going to be removed. Paving is going to be done, and then an entire new track will be put on, on top of the new paving.
Do you have any indication when, for Pokemoke, this is going to occur?
It is sensitive to the weather. We can't do any of this work when it is below 60 degrees.
Okay.
So sort of time is of the essence to get on their schedule. Most likely, this will happen after spring sports next year.
Oh, after spring sports, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Buchanan, I have spoken, just to let the board know. We have also spoken to the commissioners about the funding for this, and they very much support it. And the reason we moved aggressively right now is time and material is going up, and also getting in line to get it done. And so it was my hope that we could possibly get it done this fall. That was impossible. So we were going to have to wait after the spring season at both schools, and then, as Mr. Slakem said, it's our hope that we can start shortly thereafter.
This locks us into pricing for these proposals, so we won't be, we won't have to deal with any escalations. And we'll be first in line, you know, as soon as we're ready for them to come do the work next year.
Thank you, Sam.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the track replacement exhibit as presented?
So moved. Bill Buchanan.
Thank you.
Second, Todd Ferante.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
My last item today, Ms. McComas, is the August monthly financial report with non-salaried expenditures totaling $2,240,385.35. The superintendent recommends approval of the financial report as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and second to approve the August 31, 2022 monthly financial report as presented?
Donna Smack?
Second, Todd Ferante.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes fiscal operations. Back to you, Ms. McComas.
We move on now to board reports, and I'd like to open up the floor to any of my fellow board members in the event you have any comments.
I feel like I'm idolizing the conversation here. I just want to kind of share with my fellow board members that down in my district, there was some false information going through about the removal of the Warrior mascot. And I just wanted to let you know that there has been no discussion. It's not being considered, and that the Warrior will remain as the Warrior of Pokemoke High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? The next regular Worcester County Board of Education meeting will be held Tuesday, October 18, in the board meeting room in, right here, at the central office. Open session will begin at 11:00 a.m. to merely consider voting to convene in closed session under general provisions, Article 3305B of Annotated Code of Maryland. I'm going to be saying that in my sleep someday. Okay, the board will reconvene, however, in open session at 12:30. Board meeting information is posted on our website and located under Board Meetings, Board Docs. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Ms. McComas. I just have three announcements today. As you know, we recognize the National Skills USA students today. They are also going to be recognized on October the 4th at 10:00 a.m. at the county commissioner's office, County Commissioner meeting. And I will be attending that. And if you can fit that in your schedule, we encourage you to be there, as they have chosen to recognize our outstanding students. Also, on October the 4th, the same day, we will be rededicating the Puzey Field in Pokemoke. That is at 5:30. I know invitations were sent, but I want to make sure everybody is aware there will be a dedication in between field hockey and soccer game. That is, again, planning to take place roughly at 5:30 p.m. I will be there, sharing a few comments. And I believe Dr. Wallace, as a former principal, will be sharing a few comments as well. And Dr. Wallace was a principal when the field was named, and tragically, we lost Susan Puzey. And also, the last announcement, as a reminder, that the MAE conference, again, is on October the 6th through the 8th, and that will be at the Weston Ennis. Further details or information, please see my assistant, my assistant, Ms. Dawn Peterson. If you haven't already done so, she has the information. And that concludes my assessment.
Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn our open session?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Second, Bill Buchanan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.